Okay, all right. The meeting is beginning at eight twenty. All right, so we have a digress. So before we start talking about finalizing the town and board budgets, everybody should have a copy of the appropriation and bond authorization for 10 million 700,000 for various capital and project. Does everybody have the board? It's an updated one. It came out in some resolution.
This morning?
Well, this afternoon.
Three o'clock this afternoon.
It was modified from the board of selectmen. It should, in the body of the--
It's your winner email.
In the body of the resolution, it has, it breaks down the cost for the various projects. This resolution did not. Does everybody have a copy?
Yes.
Okay. So it's before us. We need to have a motion. We either accept it or we don't. So do we have, if you want to take a moment to just kind of look through it, and then if I have a motion to accept this resolution, it's the--
My only comment is, I'm used to seeing on most resolutions that we speak to an amount not to exceed. And this just speaks to a total sum. I don't think it makes a difference, but just because we authorize 10 million 700,000, we have to spend it.
Sure.
If we can get it done for less--
Right.
--great.
My understanding is we can't change-- this is like the language from bond council.
This came from council, okay.
Yeah. I don't feel for selectmen, is there any reason why that bond council didn't put that language in?
You technically cannot exceed it because you're only appropriating for-- you're not appropriating, but you're authorizing for that amount. So you can't authorize for more.
No, I know. They can go over that.
Right, yeah.
Again, I will, I always would have to defer to bond council beyond that. This is their recommendation.
But your comment, that language would make it better. I mean, obviously, they're not going to go over it.
No, I can't.
No. So do I have questions?
We're having discussion before we have a motion.
Well, I've got to have a motion first, and then we have discussion. So if I have a motion--
On the motion, you said?
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
The amounts that were forwarded by the capital expenditure committee for these bridge projects, which are great because we get 80% reimbursement, was 2,663,121 for the bridge over Kelsey Town and 1,333,223 dollars for the Carter Hill over the Menugatzeek. These figures that are bunched together for the two bridge projects add up-- we're requesting here 5.2 million dollars. What was requested in December was 3.9 if you bunch them together. So I have a question on how that, how that extra million dollars got put into these projects because I know this had been worked on for a year or more by PNEF and engineers. And my other question is--
Can I answer the first question?
Yeah, because actually I want to-- just to update you, on our March 18 meeting, when it was presented to us, those numbers were born up.
A million dollars?
Yeah, 2.2 for Carter Hill, 2.9 for Kelsey Town.
Oh, so it went from 1.3 to 2.2.
Yeah, and you know, Tom and I were on the bond committee. We met with others that were on the bond committee and the engineers, but they were old estimates and the price of money here. Did you have anything else to add?
Just that the estimates were thrown 2016, so they had to be readjusted to the current rates.
And the other part of my question would be, in fairness and in transparency to taxpayers, one thing in this town that you hear over and over again is nobody really knows what's going on, what's happening, and what happened, and how did it happen, is that-- I don't like the lumping of together, the together of these projects. If the bridge over Carter Hill Menugatzeek is 2.2, express it that way. The expression has to be clear, straightforward, and easy for taxpayers to see and understand. Expressing it lumps, to me, is, well, it looks like we're hiding something. We want to move money around or something. I just don't see a problem with expressing it as clearly and straightforwardly as possible. And I also don't understand why we can't allow the taxpayers to thumbs up or thumbs down on various projects.
Derek, if I can?
Sure.
So the reason for it all being in one package came from bond council. So I think everybody on this board can recognize that we want to defer to our bond council over all of us individually interfering in that process and that recommendation. Bond council specifically puts these projects together in one bond for the reason-- just as an example, say the bridge project. You're in the process of working on the bridge projects. The footings need to be expanded, and that cost is $50,000 more, $100,000 more. You now have a scenario where you have to stop construction, go back out to referendum for a project to complete the project, which is not realistic in the way that we operate. So you looked at the numbers from 2016. Things adjust over time. Within the bond package, that gives us opportunity. If one of the projects is less, it gives us the opportunity to use some of that funding to complete other projects. It's very much how this process works. It's the way the town has done it for as long as I've lived in town, and it's how the town charter speaks to the process as well. Again, I am not going to counter what our bond council has made a recommendation on, nor would I want to jeopardize the funding specifically on road projects or bridge projects because we can't complete them because we have to go back out to a referendum for a second portion of the project and say that fails. Then we have to reimburse the engineering process, the bonding for the engineering, the 80% reimbursements, and then we'll have to get reimbursed or reimburse the state as well for the construction side. It jeopardizes a lot.
It does not jeopardize democracy and letting the taxpayers know there's huge cost overruns because the footings are not appropriate and you're going to have to cough up more money. That's the thing I want in all government to have clearly-- that everyone understands clearly, when the dollar comes out of their purse and goes in the taxpayers' coffers, how it's spent.
Well, are you just objecting? Because I mean, it is set forth what each project is costing with the exception that the two bridges are put together. So why not have them--
The excuse is, so we can move monies around. And to me, that's a shady excuse. That's not transparency. That's not honest, open government. So that's why I object to it.
I think excuse is not legitimate when you're referring to what the bond council recommendations are. Again, this process that we go through should, for instance, the examples of the footing, the board of selectmen, or at the time, it will be the council, will have to go through a very public process to determine how they address a shortfall in one part of the project and allocating to another. There's no deception there. It takes energy to be part of your government. It takes energy to know what's going on as well. So it's a two-sided coin here, and it takes both sides. So there's no malfeasance here. It is appropriately documented in the resolution. And again, I go back to our, our bond council has made this recommendation, and this has been the process all along.
Well, the bond council made a recommendation for a very un-- proposal that was mixed, and three hours later, apparently, he changed his opinion. So I'm not really convinced that the bond council's word is on everything unless it's presented to him or them.
Okay, but what's before us now, though, is we are just to do yes or no. So if we decide to say no, I think there's also repercussions, which I believe the selectmen can share with us. If we vote this down, because I mean, when it was brought before us, the bridges had a certain deadline, I believe. And the bridges are, 80% reimbursable?
Yes.
So, but if we vote this down and these things don't get done, I believe there's repercussions.
I thought I read it, we have till December this year to enact these things.
So, again, Derek?
Yes.
Again, if we do not authorize-- again, we're not spending until we actually spend it-- if we do not authorize this, we will then trigger where the state is going to come back and ask for the 80% reimbursements they have already made on those other two bridge projects for the engineering portion. The bridges need to proceed as well because if you do not do the bridges, they will close those bridges. With the roofing projects, those are 40% reimbursable as well.
But nobody said a date. I said a date. I understood it was, we have to make a decision by December. Is there a date? You talked about decisions being made. When is the date?
I don't understand the question of your date.
If this isn't passed tonight through the democratic process of us, again, name, will there be another opportunity to bring it forward?
No.
Is there a, oh, this is drop dead?
Yes.
Three hours before the meeting, drop dead, got to do it.
You have to put it on a referendum. If you do not put it on a referendum, it doesn't go through the process where the state wants to see that you appropriately authorize the resolution for those funds for the bridges.
Okay. Then other referendums for bonding without--
I'm not sure what your question is. What, are you saying that we should not do it tonight? I'm not sure what you're--
I'm just trying to understand the scope of this in terms of a drop dead date, which I've been informed by you is tonight.
Again, Derek? If you want to get it onto the referendum ballot, you would need to make a decision tonight in order for the town to notice it on the referendum. In the same way, tonight, you have to make a decision on your town budget in order for us to notice for a referendum. Same process.
Right, but we've known about the budget for a year. We have not known about this like, 3:00 this afternoon. It's a little sticky and unfair.
Derek, we should talk about it. To be fair, we've spoken about it at our last meeting, so we're not-- but, so just to move on, the issue that you have is you would like those two split out, which is not what we're, I mean, we're discussing it, but that's not within our purview here. So you obviously, if you don't like the way it's written, you could say vote no. So is there any other discussion on this?
Could I just set the record straight? I believe we have in the past separated these out so that the voters could vote. I remember, no years ago, they voted down the turf field and voted up breathing apparatus for the fire department.
And the same thing with sidewalks.
Right, so it is erroneous. It is erroneous to say that we have never broken these out to give the voters a chance to vote in favor of one and against the other, and I resent us being told things that are blatantly false.
Christine?
Nobody made any inference that that hasn't been done before. Again, I will go back to, this was the recommendation of our bond council. This information is not new. There has been bonding committee meetings. This came from their own capital expenditure committee in which owner Nadel also sits on. None of these numbers should be uninvolved in a democratic process. There's nothing new here. And again, I'll go back to--
Million dollars is new.
Again, same information that we've been working for since December of 2018.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yea.
Okay, pass. For the board. All right, finalizing the town and board of education budget. Before we get into this, and I just feel that it's appropriate to talk about this now. It's not officially on the record, but I know that there's been some kind of confusion with correspondence. When Mary sends us correspondence, we're all individuals within the board of finance, including the alternates. We are individuals that are also townspeople, but we act as a board. And as a board, when Mary sends correspondence, as individuals, we cannot respond. We get public comment in an open meeting, and then we respond as a board. But if you're sending emails individually to correspondence that's being sent to us, you, by virtue of using your town email, you are representing the board, and that is not proper procedure. So we cannot do that. So I just wanted to make that clear so that we all follow the proper procedures. It's not like we're ignoring people, but we are an entity, not an individual, even though we are individuals. So just want to make that clear. Also, there were some questions as to whether or not the procedures that were followed as the last meetings or things that got put into the budget. I just want to bring us, bring the attention to the other members here that we had this public hearing, and we're having this discussion now to make corrections or modifications to the budget. That is within the charter. It's within our charter, section 10.2, specifically section E and F, where it is our purview that the board of finance shall revise any estimates it deems desirable and prepare a recommended budget before the annual meeting and publish the proposed town budget in newspapers. This is going to get published again. So we have every opportunity to make corrections tonight or make any kind of modifications. So that being said, we can start discussing anything that needs to be done.
I'm trying to find out. The minute I saw this legal notice, I did respond to the gas director. I pointed out that it did not reflect the minutes of the board of finance meeting as far as capital expenditure. And that we should be correcting it to the public records. And I was annoyed repeatedly.
Kirk, we are addressing it tonight. You didn't need to be addressed. Nothing precarious going on. We are going to discuss that tonight.
The fact you mentioned is that we spent taxpayer money to produce an advertisement that reflected a budget that was fictitious.
It's not fictitious.
It is.
Kirk, we're going to discuss it tonight. And actually, I don't have to recognize you because you're an alternate.
That's correct.
So we're going to discuss it. If you have anything to add, I may let you speak, but let us proceed with--
You can muzzle me if you want to, but that was not the right way to do it.
Kirk, I'm not muzzling you. And I have never, ever muzzled you or stopped you from asking questions that were appropriate. So let us continue. Do you have any motions?
Could someone explain to me then how that happened?
We're going to discuss it.
Kirk, just explain to me how it happened. I mean, that's all I want to know, is how did it turn out not to reflect the way the board of finance voted to put it into the budget?
In the spirit of corrections and in the spirit of democracy, as I was saying, looking at some actions we took that I think were not done in the best way, the correction I would like to make and make a motion to do is from the Plinton town budget. I'd like to remove both the capital improvements offset by fund balance of $1,271 and, actually, $271,002 from both the debt line as well as the appropriate surplus to be used for capital line.
And the board of education, from what was said tonight at the public hearing, where are you?
No, he's on the legal notice. What he's saying is that to remove the capital improvements offset by fund balance of the 1.2712. And then the appropriate--
Appropriate surplus to be used for capital.
Okay, who has a second?
Second.
All right, discussion. Still lost. So--
Can you show me where you are?
This is the, up here. Right, he's making a motion that it should be-- That it should be removed from the budget. Because these were representative of the projects that the capital expenditure committee had recommended be paid from the surplus. And by it being incorporated actually into the budget, I think it created some kind of either confusion or it wasn't the true intent, I believe, of the board because it's an offset. It should not even affect the budget whatsoever.
And where would this be expressed if it's not expressed on--
I have a second motion after this.
So if we have further discussion on this, we'll vote on this motion, and then we could proceed further.
Well, I would like to ask if we're in discussion mode. Where, if it's not expressed here, where might it be expressed?
Well, I want, it would be--
No, we can discuss it.
Okay, so my intent was that, and recognizing some history that I didn't realize, is that this would be best suited for a town meeting where everyone could come and talk about it.
That is a children's ridiculous.
That's a democracy.
Listen--
That's exactly--
Kirk, order. Go ahead.
Don't, you're asking a question.
So we're taking it out of the, how we're spending the surplus--
Yes.
--on the budget notice--
Correct.
--per your motion, and you will want to have a public meeting on whether or not--
Town meeting.
Town meeting.
A town meeting.
A town meeting, a town meeting. How this, whether or not this will even be done.
That's correct.
I see, okay. Well, and I think historically, that has been the past practice of the town when, you know, to purchase-- because it is an offset.
Offset, well, it's the spending of taxpayer dollars, so--
It is, and taxpayers will have their voice, no?
Not really.
Yeah, they have their voice like us, too.
They have their voice. That's giving them a direct voice instead of it being represented by a set of people.
Well, no, but this is a direct voice. This is what they vote on when they go on the voting--
These are just--
You're right, you're right.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. This is not a budget attorney item, really. It is, and it's not, no.
That is true.
Yes.
When this came up in the meeting, I said that my objection to paying for these this way was because you were going to do it in a town meeting. And I was told by the first electman, no, this is how we intend to do it. And I said, that's fine. I think I'd, I like this much better in the budget where thousands of people vote on it instead of 40 people spending $1 million. This, yes, our charter permits it, but it is something we-- and you're right, we've done it for years. But we defeat a budget and then come in halfway through the year and then put it in, 3,000 people voting it down, and 40 people put it back in. And yes, you can do it that way. Yes, it's in the charter, but it's not, to me, the ideal way in a democracy to let 40 people override the will of 3,000 people.
Kirk, is, are you understanding that 40 people is the limit for the auditorium?
No, but that's how many people come.
I'm simply asking.
Typically, at a town, there are plenty of people here that go to them.
But don't you think that--
It's 20 people.
Explain better at a town meeting. You know, you want transparency. So you have this, and you have the moderator. Discuss it, and then, no, if it's in the bond--
And then we have a vote either by hand or by secret ballot.
Correct. I just don't think you get the participation.
I would agree if every voter would come in and go all the way--
And at the right day of week, et cetera, et cetera, yeah. I can understand.
All right, so let's move on.
So, okay, all in favor? No, we're still discussing. All in favor? Aye, opposed?
I thought we were still discussing. What did you want to say?
No, I think they-- sorry, I didn't need to cut off discussion.
No, that's fine. So you're-- I'm abstaining because I'm undecided.
Okay, so it passed 4 to 1 abstention. Okay, Jason, you want--
So as it was sort of signaled, I'd like to make a motion that these go to a town meeting for the taxpayers to make a decision with guidance on what to do with the surplus.
Okay, well, I think you have to be more specific.
More specific?
Yeah.
Well, I'm telling you, this would be done this year. Not the way it was designed, but--
I don't know, do I need a set date?
No.
I mean, I'm happy to do it. I just don't, okay. Then, Jane says no. I know who my--
It's Jane, the delicious--
I know who's the boss. So the 1.2712 surplus--
No.
No?
Is it the surplus? Yeah. Go ahead, go ahead.
Surplus for townspeople at a town meeting to determine its use with the guidance that these capital projects improvements.
Derek, it should have the specific breakdown, right?
Could you have a fun page of Kirk program?
Oh, Kirk helping out? Okay.
You program.
I would be happy to read that off.
Yes.
Okay. I will, I apologize. So this is again, the learning process, everyone. So it is this, just so I can read it correctly.
To appropriate--
Yeah.
Yeah, there's the, they look at--
At the second paragraph.
Well, the first part.
We can do the moderator's first.
Okay.
Do whatever you want for five.
So I'm removing--
No.
I have savings.
Okay, all right, let me rephrase, and I apologize for the audience who's patiently waiting. The 556,200 that was made to the educational capital budget--
What? No, just list them.
Just list them?
Yeah.
Is this, okay, so it is the education budget, right? Which includes a reeval, heavy-duty dump truck, various public work capital projects. I believe that is it, or is there anything else?
Didn't it include pipes for--
Yeah, that was in 556,200.
For the education.
That was for the--
Pipes.
So do we have a second?
It's not a very clear motion. I'm happy to revise it if someone needs--
Mary's--
Yeah.
The money, the things--
All in favor? All right, discussion.
Discussion.
I think you should, doesn't make the amount for each other. She will do that. You will do that.
Do we have it in your thing?
Any further discussion?
Okay, I'd be--
All right, all in favor? Aye, opposed?
Another thing? No, I said aye.
All right, here. All in favor?
I just made this--
I don't know, did you need to step first?
Well, I have some savings that I can, that things have changed that we can eliminate.
Which thing now?
In general government administration, juror item number, what are we, 32, I think? Or 31 or 32? Down here at the bottom, about six up, copier equipment supplies. I spent a couple days researching what this was because I was puzzled why it wasn't in the IT budget. And I found out very nicely from Sue that what it is has nothing to do with the actual copiers. It has to do with the cost of different departments coming in and making a copy. We get, the current system is you put in your, whatever your number, and if you're planning zoning, you get charged for copying. We're about to sign a new copier lease program. These are fax, scanner, copier, and they cover everything but paper. Departments don't have to buy toner. They don't have to pay per use, per page, just covers. And it's covering everything in the town. Department of Public Works, the fire department, police department, this building, health next door, and everybody goes to board of education. And that's going to be signed before the new season, the new fiscal season. So this $15,750 could be eliminated because it won't be there anymore.
So is that your, are you making--
Making a motion to remove the $15,750 because it's--
And this is from general government?
General government administration.
Yeah, it's 30.
For copier equipment supplies, which is according to Sue, the cost of--
One night, $1,500 for--
Yeah, and that's where it should be at.
And also can be said park and recreation budget--
Wait, what?
No, 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 but it's a hot topic, but they have 2,000-- they have 2,000 something dollars for copier leases, which they don't need anymore because it's under the IT budget. Where do they have that?
Is the park in there?
Park and Rec also has a line item for copier leases. Copier lease contract, under repairs and maintenance, copier lease contract, they mention an amount of $2,652. That's no longer under their budget because it's under the IT budget.
Yeah, so you want to make, unmake the motion that $2,652--
What's the other one first?
--gets taken out of the park and rec budget because it's already in the IT budget.
And then, all right, so you're going to do that one first and not the general government? All right, is there a second to this motion?
Is that called, what is the line?
Oh, in park and rec?
Yes.
In park and rec, it's general maintenance. He has it under--
General maintenance?
General maintenance.
Your repairs are--
General maintenance is already in.
Your repairs are--
We already took money out of that.
Yeah, but this is money that they're-- say-- Yeah, but this is money that they're saying they're, I mean, this is again transparency. So if the guy says he's going to spend this on copiers and there's no cost to him for copiers, why is it in there?
And you're saying this is already refunded in the technology budget?
Christine can speak to it. I think this is.
So, so did nobody second the motion?
Okay, sorry, that was my bad.
To remove those items because they're not, they have no scanning anymore. They don't make any sense.
Can you just clarify, was your motion for both or just?
No, we're doing one at a time. And she did the two thousand in my park and rec.
Right, 15,700 from general government other because that budget line is no longer.
We're sorry.
One at a time.
Yes.
So, fifty thousand. Are you going to do them both together or?
Let's do one at a time.
Mary wants one at a time.
One at a time.
So.
So, fifth, which one are you going to do first?
Yeah, which one are you doing first?
We're, since we're on the park and rec.
Are you drinking coffee?
No, no, no.
I don't know, can I just want to come to the bar?
All right, which one do you put in first?
She made a motion regarding the.
The 2,000. Do I, 2,652 dollars that they have for copier lease contracts, which can be eliminated.
Okay, we have a second to order.
But that's already been reduced to eighty.
There's no dollars.
You've already taken it out. We took it out the last one. There's not 2,600 to take out.
We only have eight hundred.
I'm just trying to straighten out what is in, what's in it. You know, the whole, this whole thing about the park and rec budget is do we have the right to say what they're spending money on or do they have the right to say it? All I want to do is to say they don't need to spend money on this and the public needs to know.
So.
So, on the general maintenance?
There has been.
It's arbitrary now whether where it came because they took Jazzercise away instead of this, so.
No, they didn't take jazzercise away.
Well, if there's no second to your motion, it's finished, okay. So, do you want to take that out of motion or?
Can I, before we go to the other motion, can we ask quite a question about the accuracy of, of the IT budget? Because I want to know it because that's important for whether I say.
We have it in the back because Ivan Bailey here, I hope to know if he took the day wrong.
There, Christine. So, that would not be accurate. There are supplies that are required to be purchased through the copier lease. So the copier lease contract is for the machines. The town still has to pay for the paper, the toner, et cetera.
Not the toner, only the paper.
The paper and the toner and et cetera, and parts.
Parts?
You have additional parts that come in and out of the machine when you replace the toner. There's the, I don't know the exact names from.
There needs to be some, because I had a meeting yesterday with Ivan Bailey who said that the only cost will be to departments, which is great, it's paper. Simplifies things.
There. Again, if Ivan Bailey, the director, the manager of the IT department wanted to make a recommendation to reduce the budget, he would have made that recommendation. Again, I will go back to, there are specific supplies that each department is going to have to pay for related to the IT, or not the IT, the copier lease.
Okay, so if you, if we're going to move on to general government other. So where is, all right, what was that?
Thirty-two, thirty-one.
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 Are you two?
I'm, I'm trying to get through. And you have copier surplus.
Unless you're looking at.
I'm just trying to make it.
No, I, it's either, it's, yeah.
Oh, here it is. Okay, Sue printed this out for me under the category of general government, copier equipment supplies, which I wanted to know what it was for. And it's payments to ASHTC Technology for land use, the town clerk, the assessor, first selectman, for the, for the, how many copies, I mean, it's here. It says exactly how many copies, et cetera. So we were paying, our current process, you can clarify this or Kirk can, is that we pay for copies. Maybe she doesn't know that. Hello? So, anyway, so I'm making a motion to take the 15,750.
So, do we have a second to owner's motion?
She wants to take 15,700, there's a motion for 15,700 just in general government.
To be.
Copier equipment supplies. Do I have a second?
Oh, everybody wants to save money.
Okay.
All right. Do we have any other motions or?
Let's go to the town.
But Jane.
We're just doing the town.
We're just going to the town, yes.
Oh, no, libraries and towns.
Libraries, yeah.
I would like to make a motion for 10,000 dollars back into the library. We have a lot of people to express and back to the library.
Did you see?
Is there a second? Discussion? Jane made it. Jane says she's seconding it, yeah. Thomas opposed second.
The discussion is that the library had 721,000 in the eighteen nineteen budget. So we're actually increasing it.
With those Sunday hours, yeah, right.
With, by, by 29,000. So definitely, Sunday hours should be able to go back in because we heard it was 6,000 dollars for Sunday hours for the whole season. So, I'm confused. You're putting that 10,000 into an increase of 40,000 from last year's budget. You see last year's budget, the 721 for the library? Okay, and currently, without putting it back, the toner back in, it's at 749 to 820.
So this would take it to 759, 820, right?
Take it back to, which is.
This is nine, yeah. There would be 750 or 820.
Which is a 40,000 dollar increase from last year. So, it's way more than Sunday hours we're talking about. We're talking 6,500 dollars for Sunday hours, Meredith Green said.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The cuts that we had last year, we originally asked for, I think it was six, I'm sorry, 759. And then we were, we ended up at the end of the year for 721. We got cut before the first vote came down. We got cut and cut again, and we ended up with 721. So that included the Sunday hours, but it also included materials that we cut. So it wasn't just that we were this year running without Sunday hours. We're also running with a smaller materials budget. So what we were asking for is to have that restated. And if you look at the history of the funding of the library, in the last, say, ten years, you'll see that it's either been flat or a giant dip that went down in 2012. We are seeing more people come through the door. We're being asked to do more with less and thus do less.
I was just trying to clarify, it's a 40,000 dollar, what Jane is proposing is a 40,000 dollar increase from last year's budget. It's not, that's all.
Any other discussion?
I don't know how to micromanage their hours, but I'm just looking at their hours online. And they start at noon on Monday, but they started at nine o'clock Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Ten o'clock on Saturday, close Sunday. I mean, it's not, I mean, it's up to them to run the library the way they want to. It strikes me that by starting at ten o'clock, the other days of the week, they'd have more hours that they could open. They could use that money that they save those, you know, starting at ten instead of nine. I mean, that's up to the library to figure that out. I mean, I shouldn't have to micromanage that, but and I don't mean to insult anybody, but it just seems to me that there are other ways to do this other than closing the library outside.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
Three, two opposed?
Yeah, passed.
Who voted? Jane?
Jane.
Because you and I don't make this.
Correct.
Because I think 30,000 is a pretty good list though. Any other motion on the town side?
I'm going to make a motion to add back in that for general government. Add back in the 2,000 dollars for the parking.
Where is that?
It's not in, it's in.
I have never in years heard of this.
It's, yeah.
Do I have a second for Amy's motion?
Well, seconds are discussed absolutely.
Any discussion? How much is this? 2,000 dollars a year? And where is it in the general government? What lineup?
Miscellaneous, miscellaneous. Five, one, one, oh, miscellaneous expenditures.
It's not a thousand. What did you say, first 2,000?
I know, what do you care?
Oh, no, the detail. You don't have the detail. I looked up the detail. It's 2,000. You cut eight, what, 2,000 of it was the.
Yeah, I didn't mark that we cut anything.
No, she's.
They cut the.
Right.
So this is general government other?
Yes.
Yes.
And it's.
Miscellaneous.
General government other, we cut zero.
No, we cut.
Matt Blair made a motion, I have it right here.
It's under general government now.
Oh, general government now.
General government.
Zero was cut from general government.
General government other, there was like a total deduction, 2,000, 500.
Right, 8,000 from miscellaneous expenditures. And that's what you're saying this is on? Correct. And it's 2,000 dollars.
There. Christine. So, that specifically is a contract. The other thing you cut within that budget is state statute where the town has to, when there's an eviction, the town by state statute has to.
Metrifying.
Pool their, their goods for a period of time. And if they are not reclaimed by paying their debt, the town has to option them off. Again, we have a contract with the local storage facility at an extremely low rate, and this covers that. I understand that this is difficult times. And your recommendation, I believe Oina Nato said that, that I, the first selectman, the board of selectmen, we have to figure it out. I will say that is the board of finances' job to figure out where the funding comes from, from these sources. So, if you're looking to cut that, that is reported by state statute, I will ask where you will be making the recommendation to appropriate those funds to cover that state statute.
So, Christine, the other of the 8,000, two went to the parking, the six was for the other.
The entire.
Okay.
Again, if we don't use it, we don't use it. It goes back to the general fund. But it is the state statute.
Sometimes it gets spent. So, back in? Given what miscellaneous. Your motion?
Her motion is to put in the 2,000. I'm asking if she wanted to amend it and you were more, Christine, just that.
Yes, I'm willing to amend it. We'll amend, yes, I'll amend the motion to add back in the eight.
Instead of just the two.
Instead of just the two.
Second.
All right, discussion, further on that?
It was nine.
But we only took out eight.
We took out eight. But what we're saying is that.
Why believe a thousand?
Someone Santa Claus. But it's, I mean, here's the thing, that parking lot is used constantly. I mean, if you haven't seen it, it's, you know where it is, right?
Yeah, yeah. I've never heard of this 2,000 dollar lease that we've had for six years. It's completely, and that's why when you put things under miscellaneous and there's not transparency and people don't know where their money is being spent, these things come up, mistakes get made.
All right, so now we know about that. And then if this other thing is by state statute.
Right, that's okay.
If you, if you don't like what we're saying, you can hold on and talk.
All right, further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, so it's four to one. And the other, I could have voted on the two.
Well, there was also a discussion, but the park and rec had some discussion. I, I, and Joe was good enough to provide a.
Letter.
A letter. People have copies of.
Yeah.
I'm only to make sure at least we bring it up and consider it, what do we do with it? I know that there were a couple of other people that felt that we should support the park and rec department. Most notably, I think it was Phil. I, I don't know if anyone has strong feelings on or the other on this. I know, I know that they did discuss specifically by cutting the supply, we gave them basically 60% of what they had left to spend will be done just printing up each page. And if nothing else, at least we should consider putting back some of the money that we're supplying for other, other, other jobs during the year. Leading Florida Valley, I don't know necessarily weeks that much. They were asking for 4,500. We cut it by 15.
Appreciate it, Tom, but this is quarter million dollar budget. And we cut six. We cut 6%. And we're not, we made recommendations based on what the materials sent to us, but they adjust their budgetary needs as required. Maybe in conversations with the Department of Public Works, whatever, but there are definitely.
Well, did you make a motion?
Not yet. I was, I was opening up the discussion to see if there was strong feeling on or the other on.
Can we go through the last, I don't know if what was, what was mentioned today?
What is it?
What you're doing. Yeah, I kind of hear. I think there are some specific things that they go down one.
Their rec and maine budget was 23,500 dollars. And the biggest, the biggest cuts was taken from that.
Well, it had already been cut.
It had already been cut.
It had already been cut, so it went down to 18,500. And then our board cut it another 10. So it's down to eight, so from 23, it went down to 8, 8,500.
First, we have to put that side question.
No, the board of, the board of selectmen recommended 238,000, 254,000 dollars for their budget. Which is more than quarter million dollars. We, so we took out 5%. I don't know what you're going to, a quarter million dollar budget doesn't seem like a lot.
Well, are there any motions on the floor that either add or put back or subtract or?
I guess what, what happens unfortunately is when you're looking at specifically a budget like this, where you're looking at an entire budget of 1,500 dollars, 700 dollars, and we're saying you can only spend that much. This shouldn't be done this way. You should be giving them enough money to operate. And if they can save it and want and not spend and use it for something else. But they only spend 238,000 dollars. Does anybody really care?
Well, yeah, we sure don't care. Every dollar we should care about.
Well, I'm, hopefully approved with a budget of.
227.
Which is mostly south, a good portion of the salary.
Right.
Right, so.
But I mean, if, if, if general supplies goes over by 100 dollars, they got to come beg us for that? Or could they transfer it from another account if they're not sending that much?
But 200,000 dollars of salary.
They're asking for supplies for effects. They don't need effects. They're getting a new printer, copier, fax scanner. Right? They don't need lease copier contracts. There's like play in there, I see. They have painting in two places. General maintenance, 2,800, and painting and repairs of paintings, 23,500.
I think that was taken out, wasn't it already?
Yeah. Well, yeah, but my point is, they have that, they have quarter million dollars to play with. They can move it and adjust it where they need it.
That, that was my point.
Well, we cut their under, but they're down. Well, we cut their under, but they're down to $222,000. And if $200,000 of it is salary, that's giving them $22,000 for one of the departments for the year. About $23,000. Which is exactly their, look, there is a maintenance, but $23,500.
Tara.
Christie.
I just want to add their budget increase because we did move that senior activities to that department. If you make cuts to their department and they have contracts or they have these maintenance that actually has to get done without question, they're gonna have to move money within their budget to accommodate that. And so that does risk that senior activity as well.
Well, there's a position here for $47,500 tonight.
You had opportunity, we're not talking about it.
We are talking about this budget, so...
There's no motion.
Now, how make the motion to add back in 10 grand parking lot?
I'll second that.
Second. All right, we'll continue discussing. Christie.
As per the union contract, if you cut somebody in the clerical position, that means it bumps people within the clerical position. The last hired in the clerical position is the person that would actually get cut.
We're not cutting any salary.
Yeah, they're not. There's no discussion of cutting. Any further discussion?
Can I just have clarification? Is it $10,000 for return of maintenance funded? Or the board is $10,000?
I think it was the general maintenance. Preparations. No, repairs and things.
Okay.
But if they're using it for jazzercise...
That doesn't make any sense.
No.
That under jazzercise is still in there, under special...
All right, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I, I nay, I'm gonna nay.
Okay, so it's four and one. All in all, opposed? Any other motions for the town? So how much did we add back in so far so far?
So far, around $28,000.
$28,000 plus.
But I have some... Sue, can I, can you do the debt savings for the town? All right, so Sue provided, because of the bond, refinanced the savings to the town, and I don't know of who's... The savings to the town is going to be $87,081.
On debt service.
On debt service.
$87,000.
$87,000.
For year?
No, this year.
This year. And this year, our debt service is $5,114,502.
Well, that's both of them.
That's both of them. Yeah, so... Just for...
A and M. Saying it now.
So basically, now that the new number for how, your motion should be done by the percent by that amount, or you want the total, or you already have the whole?
Yeah, just the reduction is fine, because she was moving the total town budget at the end.
Okay. So I need a motion to accept the reduction of $87,081 from the town debt savings. Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, everybody said fine. All right, do we have, so at least now we have some evidence.
Well, that's more than offset $28,000. That more than offsets.
Okay, absolutely, but... There you go.
But do you want to add something else?
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we got $87,000, we're good.
Let's amend it. It's not on my list.
Let's see, any further motions, or are we ready to close out this town? Give that in $28,000 to the budget, the town budget.
We take, we add in $28,000, subtracting itself.
Yeah, Sue has the total when you write it down, keep the total.
Well, is there anyone else? Or sounded like you want to make a motion?
All right, I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion, so under Police 16, make motion to cut overtime down, only down 30 grand.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay.
Where did you come up with that?
We added 60 back in. We're hiring more officers, so hopefully we won't need to...
Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The past three to... Minus 30 here.
Basically, offset to 28,000.
There we go. All right, so are we done with the town? Any other motions? Okay. Should we close out the town?
Please.
Throw away the key.
I have, I gave everybody a copy of the motion, we just have to include the total.
Okay.
I have $18,606,312 for the town. $18,606,312, correct.
Do you know what it was last year?
It was $18,566,970.
It's an increase of classes of 3.1%. 3.11%.
And that takes out the capital improvements.
And that does, yes, you're correct. That does take out the union too.
So do I have a motion for the town at $18,606,312?
No, I just, the whole language.
You don't want meter read, you really want meter read after the law I did before? All right, your superiors. All right, motion to recommend and send to the annual budget meeting scheduled on May 1st, 2019 at 7:00 P.M. Did I screw up?
Nope.
Okay. And adjourned to referendum on May 8th, 2019, at the W.S.A.M. Town Hall, at the, excuse me, the 2019-2020 budget of the total town $18,606,312.
Second? A. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah. Might as well be consistent.
All right. Now, education stuff. So before we even discuss, I thought we could do the...
In the current budget, you get appropriate $300,000 from the surplus. Are you not gonna hopefully, anything this year?
Not this time, we can do that at the end.
I don't even remember that budget. But the thing, I don't, I think there's a time that you can add, rather than, there's a time that you can't add.
Yeah, I think what we did last year...
Right, but I'm not sure we just had, I'm like, I'm not sure we can add my whole...
I think what we did last year was, because we had the money. Am I correct, or? No, last year, Christine, you have a question?
Want to recess and have a conversation? Want to have a conversation?
Mary, do you want?
No, no, I'm sitting to Sue. Do you want to recess and have a conversation?
We have a significant surplus. And by taking a million two out of our surplus, whatever we have to maintain in...
Now, we still have some.
How much, how much is left? Yeah, it's not a lot.
What, what is, what is your question?
By taking more out of appropriate, unappropriate surplus, appropriate is the budget. Like you did last year, we did $300,000.
Yes.
If we were to do it again, what would be left of our unappropriated surplus?
Yeah, but we, and we didn't do it at this time. I think we definitely made it...
On the previous years, usually $150,000.
Right, and last year we dealt with it, but it was, I think, active budget.
As long as you can do it later, there's a time when you can and you can't do things together. And I think we're getting close to a time, I don't think you can change it.
There would be a Sue question, or?
Well, unless something comes up that we didn't know, right? Yeah, like if state budget comes out and...
And it's not a lot less.
Or whatever, it's different, yeah.
Or a work.
Yes. You can, if you would like to recess and have a conversation, you could do that. Your other option is to, either you're gonna have to look at how much you have in your undesignated, keeping the 12%. We had said that, I mean, the board had said that, you know, we're trying to keep at 12.5, and offsetting that 1.2 million that you've just taken out, and make a determination how much is left that you would be comfortable putting back into the budget. If you're gonna do that, I would think now's probably the time to do it, since you're going to be noticing this information to the town, having the meeting, and then going to referendum. But again, it's, it's up to you.
We need to keep that 12% for the bond rating, correct? The bond rating, it sort of depends on the 12%.
Right, you can't pull below that.
Well, we can.
No, we can, but nonetheless...
I have, let's just continue, and then let's, you have, continue discussing the Board of Ed.
Okay.
And then we can readdress that. Does it want to kind of get to...
Yeah, it's 9:30, why not?
Yeah, exactly. So, the easy stuff, because I have the debt service savings from the Board of Ed that Sue just provided. So there's a Board of Ed debt savings of $96,501. So we need a motion to reduce the Board of Ed debt by $96,501.
Some more.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Where'd they get that from? Oh, they're part of the refinancing.
Refinancing, right.
Right.
So, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The other saving that was just brought to us this evening was that there was a special Board of Education meeting held today where the Board of Ed capital expenditure request was reduced by $155,050. So we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to reduce the Board of Education capital expenditure for 2019, 2020. By...
$155,000.
It was $155,000.
$155,000, $155,000.
Second.
Okay, discussion? That was the savings from the health. Right, yep. All in favor? No.
Oh, no, hold on. That's capital expenditures.
Okay.
Yes, it was system-wide capital expenditure.
Did she say what that was, what they were?
Yeah, it was a deduction to, well, I have to break down that Elliott School is only $30,000, and system-wide is $368,971. So the total capital is $398,971.
Right.
They were $55,550. My notes from the minutes. $250,000 from the health insurance.
Well, that's what you already cut. That's what you already...
But, you know, overall savings.
Have we motioned that except for money?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'll make, I'll make the motion. Did, did...
I thought I seconded it.
Yes, I seconded it.
Well, this is discussion. Right, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Everybody in favor. All right, are there any other reductions to the Board of Ed? Okay, so we can get a final number for the total education.
Education will be $36,509,956.
Do you repeat that?
All right, Jason, you...
Can I get that percentage?
Percentage is 2.78%.
Okay, and, but it was $36,761,505, I hope?
Yes.
And now it's $36,905?
No.
Five, oh, nine, 509, sorry. And the last three numbers are 9, 5, 6, 9, 5, 6, sorry. Thank you. And that's 2.4%?
70.
2.70.
Thank you.
All right, Jason, go ahead.
Uh, I'd like, oh, sorry. You ready?
Yeah.
Make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to recommend and send to the annual budget meeting scheduled on May 1, 2019, at 7:00 P.M. Adjourned to referendum on May 8th, 2019, at the W.S.A.M. Town Hall, the 2019-2020 budget of 3, excuse me, $36,509,956 for the education.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
W.S.A.M. number, so we could clarify something.
It sounds like a radio station. I was not gonna ask the question, because people have to get...
Well, is this for all, do we have to do it in the whole now, or this...
No, we did, you did, and you...
Okay, so you want to just take a really quick recess, and we'll figure out if we can have any kind of surplus that we can transfer, and look at the number of real costs, and then...
This is, so...
It's like last year, we transferred like $20,000 on the...
I don't want to break, we can do this now.
No, no, I think it was...
I'm not going anywhere.
Is Sue prepared for this?
No, she's not.
We've got the fiscal year ends July, June 31st. No, no, it's kind of early.
We're just moving on right now, the expenditure percent.
I just don't want to screw up, I'm not hearing something.
Sue's not prepared, so I don't see why we should, I can just push this.
And we have to do it. That's, I mean, our purpose is what it is.
Tara?
Yeah, well, no, I, I'm saying, the motion to...
Tara? Don't do it tonight, you're not, you're not part of the button. You want to address it tonight? Jack?
No, I'm only just trying to play it for transparency. No, I, you know, not a good situation, but if you're not gonna, I'll look at it.
You guys keep quiet, we're still having our meeting.
I think it's the other.
So, Tara?
If you're gonna put that, really gonna put that in the, this isn't the paper, is it?
Yes, yes.
And which one's the deadline for that, for the recent, next Wednesday?
No, I, I think I did mention it tomorrow. I think, I should. So typically, when we're, again, you need to know what your fund balance is, and you need to know how much you want to keep your fund bound. So if we're saying you want it at 12.5% cushion, you need to acknowledge that the school is going to have reimbursement, so there'll be reimbursements that come back for the town. We don't know when they're gonna hit. The school has reimbursements that they're anticipating by July 1 as well, that could be around $300,000, but we don't know that yet. But taking that into consideration, that gives you an idea that we would probably look at $150,000. Again, that is just, but that's just a rough estimate right now. Again, you probably want to look at your fund balance. Again, you, you probably want to look at your fund balance, and that's what I'm saying.
But we could do that Monday night and still get it in the ad, is what I'm trying to determine. Because you can't, I mean, you're, the deadline for getting our J C R news is Monday Wednesday, right?
Thursday, I think it's Thursday.
But the thing is, we could do this Monday. But you have an overview, you have a. But we could do that.
I agree.
I agree. I agree. So motion to adjourn, so, all right, can I have a motion to adjourn, second? All right, all in favor? Good job.
No, wait there.
You want to stay?
This video provided as a public service by Kirk Carr, the Kirkster. Thank you for watching.